Good evening. Welcome to the January 27th meeting of the Eugene City Council. The mayor is in Washington DC at the United Way, I mean the United Front meeting, which is a great opportunity for us to be represented in Washington DC. So she's doing very important work and cannot be with us this evening, so I will be presiding. I will let you know at the beginning that we have currently 50 people signed up to speak. Due to the business we need to get done tonight and the time we have available, each presentation will be limited to two minutes, so that we can make sure everyone gets an opportunity to speak. I would also let you know that we will be discussing the Whoville and sleep station issues on Wednesday at a work session. Councilor Sorette and others are working on some specific solutions that we'll be talking about at that meeting, so there are some ideas that are in play. I just wanted to let you know that in ahead of time. So the first item on the agenda is the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have two minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, your city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if you know it. The timer and the lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of your two minutes. We also encourage you to not show lots of signs of support or opposition to the speakers. We want to create an inviting and tolerant atmosphere for everyone, so we discourage applause, sign holding, or any other kinds of activities which could be intimidating to others. Thank you for your cooperation, we appreciate it. So with that, the first person to come up will be Gwendolyn Iris, followed by Aaron Taylor.
Hi, my name is Gwendolyn Iris. I live in the Ferry Street Bridge neighborhood. I don't really actually have anything prepared, I just felt this was a really important meeting for me to come speak on behalf of Whoville. I kind of wanted to address the subject of fences tonight. I've seen a few different fences that symbolize what I see happening in this town over the last couple of years. The first was the fence that went up around Washington Jefferson Park when the Occupy Eugene site was closed down, basically symbolizing pushing the homeless back out into the shadows of the city, rather than having them in one space where we can reach out and help them. The next fence was the fence that I locked myself to for 36 hours a couple of years That fence was, that was big for me. I locked myself to that fence and was out in the elements for 36 hours, sleeping on the concrete, and an amazing thing happened is the community came together and was there and supported me. And I just remember being locked to that fence, thinking about all the people that were out by the river and in alleys, that didn't have that kind of community support. They didn't have people to come together and help them, to be there for them emotionally, and bring them resources. And then Whoville happened, and that to me represented what I felt was lacking in our community for those people that are forced out on the street and don't actually have the option. I chose to go locked myself to that fence to call attention.
Thank you. Next is Aaron Taylor, followed by Wayne Martin.
My name is Aaron Taylor, and I reside outside of the county, but I pastor a church in Springfield and also in South Eugene. And do a lot of work here in the community. Up to this point, have fed, up until this last summer, under the Jefferson Street Bridge to help many that are here and many that have been represented, homeless and non-homeless, just trying to help a feeding station. Tonight, I want to address in my couple of minutes here, two issues quickly, just at least maybe to start some dialogue that we can have at other times. One is, is because of what has happened to the Jefferson Street Bridge as far as construction, has left us in a very difficult place to find a place to really feed and help on the basis that we had done for 14 years. Renting the park, paying to feed the homeless in our community, thousands of dollars every year, having to pay the parks to rent the park to feed the homeless, and then that being taken away, has been really difficult to find something adequate to feed the homeless. And I hope that you would take that into consideration, that nonprofits are trying to help, I mean they really are. Churches and other nonprofits are trying to help. I think there needs to be a little better dialogue. I did appreciate that the city, some of the city officials did reach out to us, but with really no alternative. And so along with sleep comes eats, and you need both. And we, in trying to do that, have found it difficult. Second area is, is we raise our funds to help feed the homeless, run our youth camps, do all of our outreaches, both locally, I'll be in the Philippines within four days, helping with relief efforts there. To do those things, we have to raise funds, and fireworks is a huge, huge fundraiser for us. Last year caused us to be able to do over $300,000 in help in our community to the homeless and those that are here.
Thank you.
So please take that into consideration.
Thank you. Wayne Martin, followed by Duncan Rhodes.
Good evening, I'm Wayne Martin. My address is 1223 Washington Street, happy to live downtown. My councilman is Councilman Brown. I'm a retired pastor, I moved here 20 months ago. It's been great, I'm happy. I'm also a retired hospice chaplain. Currently, I consider myself an activist. I'm one of those quiet activists, but very much try to be on the scene in quiet ways. I join with other activists tonight, who will, in the course of the evening, present to you a plan that we think is extremely creative and satisfying to everybody. I'm here to ask that you not make any decisions, or ask any departments to make any decisions, until our suggested agenda is placed before you for your vote. I'm concerned about the brothers and sisters at Whoville, that they remain safe and secure for the next, at least several days, or even weeks, before you've made your motion and presented action on their proposal. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you. Next is Duncan Rhodes, followed by Mary Elixon.
Yes, I'm Duncan Rhodes, I live in the Whittaker, it's Claire Sorette's district. After we had the repaving of Fifth Avenue Blair and Van Buren last year, we had no parking and a bike lane on the south side of Fifth Avenue, which has been a big help. However, we have noticed numerous instances of cars parked in the bike lane on West Fifth Avenue. I emailed this to the Van Buren City Council earlier today. The instance I want to talk about, a car was parked in the bike lane on the south side of West Fifth, was reported to the police on Wednesday, December 4th. This car had Washington plates and an expired 2012 registration. Big snow arrived two days later, this car remained in the same spot without moving for 12 days. The police were notified numerous times, we can't understand why it wasn't ticketed and towed promptly, it gets you money to do that. This is an unsafe condition for people trying to ride their bikes on the street. In the email I forwarded, I had a sequence of four photos, which Brad Foster sent to me with, that he'd taken with his helmet camera, and you can see numerous cars parked in the bike lane, and a biker going down the road being tailgated by an SUV, and then passed by the SUV. This is unsafe. We would like for the city to step up traffic enforcement and stop people parking in the bike lanes. If it helps, maybe you can paint the curb yellow the whole way, or put up signs or something, but they're just completely ignoring the bike lanes, and you're going to get somebody killed.
Thank you. Thank you. Mary Elixon, followed by Frederick Bliss.
I'm Mary Elixon, I live in Ms. Taylor's ward. I'm here to speak about fireworks. To me, the breaking point was last summer when the people in North Eugene lost their home. There was an illegal firework in that case, but I believe a legal one would have done the same damage. It landed at the bottom of an Arborvitae by their house, and the roof caught fire and the house basically burned down. I have Arborvitae around my house also, and I live just one house away from a park. I live next door to some neighbors that have two children that set off fireworks every year. The father bought them legal fireworks, but the boy, the teenager, went out and bought illegal fireworks, and they set them off about 10 feet away from my Arborvitae every year. And I told the father about it, that after this house burned, I told him I didn't want them setting any more fireworks off in our little cul-de-sac, they leave the debris right there, then for the next couple of days after they come every year. The father and mother are so angry at me now that they've been parking out in front of my house, in my one space that I have to put my garbage bins, because of retaliation for them even talking about the issue. So what I'm asking is, for the sake of the seniors like myself and the people whose house burned, and for the dogs and cats in the neighborhood, that we not have to listen to any fireworks at all. If people want to listen to them, they can go to authorized demonstrations and have really spectacular fireworks. But the law enforcement people have testified that they don't have enough people to come to every neighborhood, so I believe we ought to ban all neighborhood fireworks.
Thank you. Next is Frederick Bliss, followed by Randy Zimmer.
Good evening, my name is Frederick Bliss. I've been a homeowner in the Friendly Area neighborhood for over 35 years, also been a pet owner during those times, and I'm concerned about the impact of life, limb, property that fireworks pose to our community. In addition to the home that burned last summer, after I read about that situation, I went up on my roof and I found bottle rockets and up to two inches diameter cardboard casings from other illegal fireworks, and was very concerned to see that these were all over the place. I also have Arborvitae in front of my house, I have sawdust mulching around plants next to my house, I'm very concerned about the impact of illegal airborne fireworks. I think it's a public health issue on several fronts. It's a safety issue, in terms of human beings losing limbs and life, as we heard during work session this afternoon. Actually forms three forms of air pollution, there's noise pollution that affects pets, vets, and others. There's residue that was left behind from fireworks that people who set them off didn't bother to pick up. And also air pollution, which I don't think is an issue that's been addressed, but there's a haze of smoke in our neighborhood every night after the fireworks are set off on July 4th. As I mentioned, I attended the work sessions later, earlier today, this afternoon, and I realized you share a lot of these concerns, and the big issue is education and enforcement of existing laws and regulations, and I support, I'd like you to think about, several ideas. One is having fireworks at sanctioned events and places only. Secondly, that there be municipal sanctions and fines, so that any violations and the fees and fines thereof would go directly to the city for educational and enforcement purposes. And I'd also encourage the council to look into Ashland's experience with banning fireworks altogether, not that that's a solution here, but that might be something that would help us.
Thank you. Randy Zimmer, followed by Jean Stacey.
Good evening, my name is Randy Zimmer, and I live in Ward 5. But first, I'd like to read a letter from one of my neighbors, Tony and Caroline Chavez, whose house burned down July 5th, and they write, "We regret that we will be unable to attend the city council meeting January 27th, due to the fact that we are in another state taking care of business. It was so unnecessary that our house burned July 5th, and completely destroyed because of fireworks, leaving us homeless and turning our lives upside down and inside out. We will be homeless for a year while our house is being rebuilt. We are in our early and late 70s. Fireworks has interrupted the sunset years of our happy lives. We want to convey to you the great need of enforcing existing laws regarding fireworks. If anyone gets a parking ticket, a fine is issued, and yet fireworks laws are broken year after year. Are citations issued? On the 4th of July, weeks before and after, permission is given to everyone to disregard property lines and cherished boundaries. Year after year, the rights of individuals have been ignored. Fireworks disturb residents at all hours, as well as frightening pets. Will the city of Eugene continue to allow this to happen? We hope not. We hope this is a wake-up call for all of you. Folks who feel fireworks is the only way to be patriotic, need to think again. Obeying and honoring the law is patriotic. In the light of the Chavez's house fire, in which 51 years of treasured memories went up in smoke from fireworks, there needs to be a drastic change. Cities and states around us have enforced laws, like the city of Ashland, concerning fireworks. We can too. Maybe something good can come out of this horrific disaster. Sincerely, Tony and Caroline Chavez." And I definitely mirror their opinion, and hope that you will think of some creative, proactive ideas.
Thank you. Jean Stacey, followed by Dan Bryant.
Jean Stacey, in several different wards. I come here tonight not as a human rights activist, but as a retired business person, and I want to talk to you about things from a financial standpoint. I'm actually very excited, because I think we've been heading towards a debacle with Whoville that I know all of you have wanted to avoid, but we simply haven't known a better path. And I think, as the mayor has said, show us a better path and we'll take it, and I think we have that tonight. We kind of have two paths possible. One is to continue the shutdown. The fence has already gone up, the police have already said they're going to use the stadium lights and the noise generators if there are any problems. After that, they will arrest the people that sleep deprivation hasn't chased out of the camp. When they arrest them and they put them in the jail, it will be catch and release, so they'll go back to Keesey Square and the park blocks, and become frequent flyers again, requiring a large number of police hours. They can't take their stuff with them, and the community has given them a lot of stuff to help make them more comfortable. Thanks to Levon versus LA, the police now can no longer just bulldoze all that stuff and throw it away, they have to inventory it, pack it up, take it and store it for 30 days, so that folks can have it if they do acquire someplace else to stay. My guess on the estimated cost of shutting down Whoville is something shy of $100,000. This isn't good use of taxpayer money, and I know none of you want to do it. What we have now is the escape hatch, which is to name a new rest stop at Athan Mill, which the city manager had on his list of sites that meet the criteria, move the folks with serious health problems there, where they can receive better care. Many of them are already clients at either Occupy Medical or White Bird, and so they'll be more centralized and have ongoing care, and the rest can go out to the rest stop you've already approved at the west side of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Bryant, followed by Art Bowman.
Thank you, Dan Bryant. I'm a resident of Mr. Clark's ward, and president of the board for Opportunity Village Eugene. First thing I just want to say, appreciative of the support that we've had from the city in building the village. I've spoken in several different venues, the university classes, church groups around the community, and I always talk about the good cooperation and support that we have, greatly appreciate that. Today, we built the 25th unit at the village, with the help of about 30 firefighters from Lane County, we call it the firefighters' bungalow, and we have 30 residents. Life is going well at the village. We, as a board, are looking forward, hopefully, to working with the folks at Whoville. We are offering our support to build something similar, probably using the Conestoga Huts for Whoville, to create some kind of transitional community, a village for them, that will look nice, as nice as Opportunity Village looks, that will be better, safer, insulated, better for the community and better for the residents. And I just want to express our support, that we stand ready to work with the city, and hope that we can have that same level of cooperation that we've had in building the village, and creating some kind of alternative that will be better for everyone. I'd also like to just make you aware of the national attention that we are getting right now. We have two students from the University of Buffalo, who are here with us to learn about what we are doing. We get calls all the time from different communities around the state and around the country, and one of the first questions I always get is, how did you get the support of the city? Because we're getting nothing but roadblocks, and so again, it gives me that opportunity to talk about the ways in which we have been able to work together to do this. So I hope we can do the same thing in working towards some kind of resolution for Whoville.
Thank you. Art Bowman, followed by Sue Sierra-Lupé.
This time last week, it looked like two years of work, on the part of council and on the part of a number of concerned citizens, had been for nothing. For those of us who went through the Occupy camp in Washington Jefferson, what happened in Whoville seemed oddly familiar. Out of the blue, it was announced that Whoville would be shut down. What was once a ticket was changed to a criminal and jailable offense. A fence was built. There were threats of lights and noise disruption, despite two years of work that had been done to try to advance the notion that sleep is a human right, and that therefore this was a human rights violation. In emergency conditions, in a duly harsh winter, and I don't know if you're aware of this fact, but the mission is, which has once been a warehouse for people who had nowhere to go, has been daily turning away people for lack of sleep. So we were looking at several dozen people who had no place to go. It was statistically probable that people would die, but yet this seemed not to have had any effect. Now you've held out a ray of hope for us, aside on Athan Mill, and I was frankly quite happy, because it seemed like we all have accomplished something. I'm hoping that this can go through and that Whoville, which has been a very successful sanctuary for economic refugees in this climate, will be kept open, and these people will have a place to sleep, and more importantly, to live, literally living, as opposed to dying, until they have a place to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Sierra-Lupé, followed by Plato.
My name, hello, can you hear me? My name is Sue Sierra-Lupé, and I am in George Brown's ward, thank you very much for your service, and I'm here to thank you all for the support that you have given Occupy Medical. We have a few issues that we are a little concerned about, and I wanted to praise you on our situation right now. As you know, there's some very cold weather coming in this weekend, which we're concerned might cause some more injuries. What we usually see with this cold weather is chillbains, trench foot, frostnip, frostbite, and hypothermia. The frostbite is what concerns us the most, because it is, of course, one of those things that we see a lasting amount of damage. With the first course of frostbite, what we're seeing right now is commonly to the extremities, the toes are what we're seeing currently, and the frostbite that we're seeing is from one day. The Egan Warming Center was not open on one day for a variety of issues, and that one day, it was below freezing, and so we have a number of patients that have come to us with their toes that are black, they have white flecks of plaque at the end, there's a waxy look to it, because of course there's no circulation down there, and then it moves to purple and red tissue, that area, in that area, they are retaining a burning sensation as if they have a red poker on their flesh, and that continues for the next one to three months of treatment. That's not a very exciting, well it is very exciting, but it's exciting in a negative way, it's not something we want to continue. We have been working with our nurses in order to treat this, and the burning sensation continues until we see healing. Right now, with the majority of our patients, we are now seeing flesh that is simply blistered. It does have that burning sensation still, but the flesh is all, sorry, it's all pink and healing, we just asked for more.
Thank you, thank you. Plato, followed by Jeremy Spafford.
How can you shut down Whoville before you have an alternative place established? Part of me just wants to spend my entire time ranting, but I'm not going to, so don't worry. I realize that compassion must be at the basis of any human rights city, and I do have compassion for your situation. I understand that sadly this is a controversial issue. I also assume that any one government has a deep respect to the authority of codes and laws, and isn't that why we want to, why you want to break up Whoville, right? It's against some law, it's violating the rule. But I ask, what is, what good is a law if it is not good for the people under that law? If Whoville's existence is breaking the law, I think this is a law that needs to be changed. Why shut down a functioning camp, especially in the absence of there being an adequate and prepared alternative? Now if you want to actually use law to verify our claims as a human rights city, how about lifting the camping ordinance 4.815? We all know that economically and sociologically, these camps are better for both the city and the citizens of the camps, than it is when these people are on their own. Now we have all been coming here for two years now, arguing about camps and the rights of the homeless, and what, this is the 10th camp so far? Let me assure you, that if you shut down Whoville without an alternative, an 11th camp will be born somewhere else. And understand that Whoville is not asking for a handout, as much as not to have their existence criminalized. So I say to you, you could either spend the rest of your political careers battling against this trend, or you can work with this sociological trend, as you have on occasion, you can continue to have a conversation with Whoville, in the spirit of cultivating a mutually beneficial relationship. Oh, I had some more good stuff I want to say.
Thank you, please, please. If you want to do this, that's okay, but let's not applaud, thank you. Jeremy Spafford, followed by Jerry Smith.
Hi, my name's Jeremy Spafford. I work as a crisis counselor at White Bird, and I see patients, or see people every day who are affected by the economic downturn of our society. And we live in a funny world, with lots of big problems, you know, name a few, ice caps melting, climate's changing, water's polluted, people can barely make it by on minimum wage. And yet, we seem to be caught in this circle of trying to figure out how to deal with this problem. This problem specifically of finding a place for people to live. And, I don't know, I mean, we can all ask, like, who is to blame, but in reality and truth, we're all responsible, and we're all at fault for what's happened in the state of where we are today. And I think we all have a responsibility to the people that we live with, to our children, to our grandchildren, to the future that we want to all be a part of. And I think it's time that we need to stop bickering and going back and forth and accomplishing nothing. It's been, like Plato said, it's been two years since Occupy, and we're still doing this dance, and we're not helping anybody. And we have much bigger problems to face and to work on, and, thanks.
Thank you. Jerry Smith, followed by Frank Bertrand.
I'm Jerry Smith, from wonderful Councilor Taylor's district. And it's odd to be here again, after, you know, I've been here I want you to know that when I saw about 20 people today coming in asking for various kinds of assistance for First Christian Church, the ones that came in from Whoville were recovering from their disabilities. And I ever... So many people at Whoville are disabled people. The ones who slept outside were in terrible shape, just awful shape. Sunday was even worse. People could hardly walk as they were dragging their way indoor. Our Sunday breakfast, we have around 300 on Sunday morning coming for free breakfast. There's got to be more camps open, and particularly if you limit the size, like Opportunity Village, a big lot for 30, 40, 50 people. When we've got hundreds and hundreds of people, probably thousands, as best I can tell from the statistics that are not made easily available, from the local SNAP program in Lane County, there are approximately 20,000 people who don't have any income at all. That was from a year ago, and unemployment's been cut off since then. For the rich, they're booming. For the middle class, there's a recession. From the poor, we have the longest depression that the country has ever faced, and more people following from the middle class into the poor every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Bertrand, followed by Barb Prentice.
My name is Frank Bertrand. If my voice trails off, please ask me to speak up. I have Parkinson's disease. I will not be insulting. Just kind of makes you feel like a squiggly firework. Members of the City Council... Oh, by the way, I'm a member of Councilor Clark's district, and I fully endorse Councilor Betty's desire for a ban, for I believe it is time for the City Council to ban consumer fireworks. I have lived in and around Eugene for 35 years, and four other states. I've heard my share of fireworks. What is intolerable is the impact consumer fireworks have on personal, privacy, our bodies, nervous system, ears, hands, eyes, and property. For further support, you have only to check with emergency room personnel, insurance companies, police departments, doctors, counselors, and veterinarians. Oregon permits only those devices like wiggly things and fountains that do not explode or fly more than 12 inches above ground. Yet, we all know that for a two-week period in July, explosions and shockwaves roll across our city day and night. It is time we listen to common sense. We are over the top. Obviously, law enforcement is difficult and expensive. That is no reason to ignore the mayhem that engulfs us in July. The City Council should add Eugene's name to the list of cities across the nation that have banned consumer fireworks. Four states have even banned them, consumer fireworks statewide: Delaware, Massachusetts, New Jersey, and New York. Enough injuries, enough homes torched, enough blown fingers, enough disrespect. It is good public policy. Please ban all consumer fireworks.
Thank you. Next is Barb Prentice, followed by Stephen Hyatt.
My name is Barb Prentice. I live in Eugene in Greg Evans Ward. I'm a member of Occupy Interfaith and the OBE Support Committee, and obviously a raging granny. I'm also a Unitarian Universalist, and in our congregational covenant, part of it asks us to assume good intentions. And so, I've been trying very hard in my life to assume good intentions of people who I meet and work with. Indeed, I assume that the City Councilors and the mayor and the city staff have good intentions in their efforts to meet the crisis of the unhoused in Eugene. We may all point with pride to the establishment of Opportunity Village, the Conestogas and the overnight parking program, city support of the Egan Warming Centers, and the endeavor to create rest stops for temporary relief. The Eugene community has shown support for these efforts through donations of time and treasure. I have heard it said by some city officials that the community does not support Whoville. I wish to dispute that assertion. Support has been demonstrated by donations of food, clothing, propane, pallets from the U of O, and by people who just show up and talk to the people living there. Community members have gathered in solidarity with the residents when the no trespassing signs went up, when the fence was built, and in a candlelight vigil last Friday night. Community support is for the people who are living there, especially for those who suffer from mental and physical health issues, who have found there a safe, caring community, which is sadly lacking out on the streets. The support is for the essence of Whoville, not necessarily for its present location. My request is that the city assures that the residents have a safe, secure place to go before there are any other moves or threats to close the present site. I support the request for the city to designate the Eighth and Mill Street site as a health site for Whoville residents who need our compassion and our help. Again, I assume the best intentions of all of you.
Thank you. Stephen Hyatt, followed by Michael Adams.
I'm Steve Hyatt from the River Road area. I haven't heard an explanation or a good explanation of why the city government would want to close down a successful site like Whoville. So I had to come up with an explanation of my own. Due to that, I just needed to think back to last summer and some other political action was taking place back then. Last summer, the Republican Party was doing what they could to prevent Obamacare from being implemented. According to many pundits, their motivation was not to fear that Obamacare would be a massive failure and bad for the country, but that it might actually succeed and become a popular law. This success could pave the way for an even better system, like a single payer plan that might actually solve the problems of our healthcare system. Could it be that the city government is afraid of Whoville being successful and pointing the way to a solution that might actually take care of the problem of homelessness? If so, why are they threatened by Whoville's success, which was achieved without government help or interference? Are they afraid that this success will contrast with their efforts and demonstrate just how ineffectual our city government has become in working for the good of the people? When I say efforts, I actually mean lack of effort, because so far, all the city has done has been to step aside and allow nonprofit agencies to spend thousands of dollars of donated money and use thousands of hours of volunteer work to do the work the city should have been doing all along. All the city did was to enforce building codes and insurance requirements that made Opportunity Village and the rest stops even more expensive to implement. Now, are they trying to disperse the unhoused population to multiple locations in order to prevent any one group from gaining the critical mass they need to form a viable community and live together in solidarity with each other? What scares them about people coming together and solving their own problems? Whatever their reasoning, the very least they could do right now is take away the threat of closing Whoville until all the residents have a place to go. I'll leave you with some words from "God Song" by Randy Newman. Lord, if you won't take care of us, won't you please, please let us be?
Thank you. Michael Adams, followed by Denise Heinz.
My name is Michael Adams. I'm over on 13th and Pro. I'm not sure which ward that is. So tonight, I'm here to say a couple of things. First thing I would like to say is thank you for giving us a chance to speak and be heard. And I'd also like to thank you for the tremendous efforts that you're currently making to figure out a solution towards the sheltering of those who are unhoused. It's not an easy situation. We all know that. Second thing I would like to mention is simple. I've been asking for this, and so many of us are asking for this still, and you've heard some of it tonight. Do not close Whoville until we have shelter available. Currently, there is no shelter, and we all know that as well. I'm not asking for Whoville to remain open indefinitely, nor is anybody else. However, we should be able to do what is considered right by many and leave Whoville open until shelter is available. Again, not permanently, but until the shelter is there. We have a possibility of snow this weekend again. If Whoville is shut down before shelter is available, there is very likely a chance that the action will result in people who are unhoused having or exhibiting symptoms of frostbite and other such medical maladies as Sue spoke of earlier. Therefore, I ask that you show kindness and caring and leave Whoville open for now. Whoville must remain open in a caring, dignified manner until such shelter is found and made available. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Heinz, followed by Keegan Nepper. Kepner.
My name is Denise Heinz. I live in South Eugene. I'm here to encourage the city of Eugene to consider acquisition of the Amazon Headwaters Forest. This is a pristine parcel of land in South Eugene. If you haven't walked the Headwaters Forest, I encourage each and every one of you to do that. It's adjacent to the Ridgeline Trail, and apparently now is more accessible to us than ever have... The Beverlys apparently have made their price more attractive to the city of Eugene. We should have this for all the citizens of Eugene to enjoy. It's a pristine forest. It has a creek running through it. It would be available to anybody and everybody. I encourage you to consider acquisition of this piece of land. Thank you.
Thank you. Keegan Kepner, followed by Ale Valkyrie.
My name is Keegan Kepner, and I am from Junction City. Hi, my name is Keegan, and I am here for Whoville and workings on being a future leader. I'm going to tell you the definition of equal. Number one, identical in size, quantity, value, or standard. Number two, with the same rights, having the same privileges, rights, statues, and opportunities as others. Number three, with even balanced between opposing sides. If you were homeless, would you like to be treated like this? If I became homeless, would you treat me like this? Where is the equal in all of this? We're not different, even if we do have a roof over our head. Is it going to take a 10-year-old to show you the answer? Please let Whoville stay till you find a place for them. To set the pace for everybody else, the answers are within you. Thank you.
Thank you, Keegan. Thank you. Ale Valkyrie, followed by Michael Carrigan.
Hi, I'm Ale Valkyrie, and I definitely can't beat that. In the deliberations in the past few weeks concerning Whoville, it's been made clear to be that public opinion is one of the main factors that's driving the closure. Many may wonder exactly what this public opinion consists of. I would like to take some time to share some of the public suggestions on how to deal with Whoville from the constituents whose public opinions you are bowing to. Courtney Brooke Kurzai says, "Tear gas and beanbag guns." Luke Mesmer says, "Hose them down." Kelly Williamson said, "I thought all those bums died in the big freeze last month." Matthew Dale Craig says, "A fire hose turned up all the way should solve the issue and throw in some soap for free." The only thing more disturbing than these comments, and I should stress that this is a small sample of what I found, are the fact that these people feel empowered enough to post such things under their legal names. Now, I know you don't support these sentiments, and I know full well that they sicken you as much as they sicken me. But if you allow Whoville to be closed without places for them to go in the name of public opinion, you're condoning this prejudice, and you're only further empowering those who already feel emboldened enough to post such hateful prejudicial things under their legal name. Is that the side of history you want to be on? Because I know you, and I know your good intentions. But if you take action and make it clear to the public that Whoville should not be evicted until the residents have a place to go, you rise above these comments instead of condoning them. You demonstrate by example that you believe that the Whoville residents are as human as you and I. You show the public through your actions that humanity is a stronger force than prejudice and hate, and that everyone deserves basic rights. I'm asking you to lead by example. Evicting our most vulnerable into the shadows with nowhere to go serves no legitimate purpose, harms everyone, and is a black eye on this community. Doing the right thing is very simple, and I leave it in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Carrigan, followed by Ann Kelvin.
My name is Michael Carrigan. I'm a proud resident of Ward 7. I want to thank you for all the good, hard work you've done helping the unhoused in the past few years, for Opportunity Village Eugene, for the car camping program, the rest stops, and more. The community is very thankful for the actions you've taken to help out our community. The residents of Whoville, it's very critical that they have an immediate place to go, a safe, secure place to go, and I think Eighth and Mill will serve that function very, very well. I'll describe from a letter that we sent you this morning. It describes the site at Eighth and Mill, an accessible site, close to services. It used at this time for a core group of 10 residents at the Broadway Hilliards site who are in need of physical and mental health services, and approximately five residents who have been helping them. What's happening with Whoville now, it's happening, coming up with a solution to it. It's a broad coalition. It's the city at its best. It's people coming together. It's, as Dan Bryant said, it's Opportunity Village Eugene, it's Community Alliance in Lane County, where I work, it's Claire Sorette and you other city councilors. It is city staff. It's the community saying, "We care, we are committed, and we are going to get this done." So it's an exciting proposal we have, but it's a temporary pilot project that'll help us move forward toward coming up with a long-term solution to solving the homeless program. So this Wednesday, let's get it done. Let's take action. Let's approve the Eighth and Mill site. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ann Kelvin, followed by Jack Dresser.
Hi. Can you hear me? Okay? I'm Ann Kelvin, and I live in George Brown's Ward. I want to thank you, first of all, for all your work. And I went to Whoville last week and sat around a fire with a woman who had mental health issues and a man who gently corrected her when her thinking became too off. She was being treated as a person, and she was being accepted in that community. I don't think there's anything more healing than being accepted and being in a safe, secure place. Jerry Smith remarked earlier that the people that he saw from Whoville were healing in a way that the people on the street were not able to. Whoville has had many struggles to get where it is, a place where people who aren't violent or causing persistent disturbances, people who may have mental health or substance abuse or just need a place to sleep can live together. It's become a self-managed community that works, and there's no other place like it. It's actually becoming a model for a diverse population. Please don't disband it. Whoville must stay open in a caring, dignified manner until the residents can transition to another site. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Jack Dresser, followed by Mary Broadhurst.
Hi, I'm Jack Dresser. I live in the Mackenzie Valley. I want to ask for what urgent alternative use does the city need to reclaim this vacant patch of dirt, more important than it's used by citizens cast adrift? Could it possibly be recruiting season for the Mighty Ducks with Franklin Boulevard the principal access route for Whoville visitors? That would be understandable. The city is right to be embarrassed should visitors see how poorly it cares for its citizens in need. The United Nations International Bill of Human Rights, adopted as international law in 1976, recognizes the right of everyone to an adequate standard of living for himself and his family, including adequate food, clothing, and housing. A right is an entitlement of citizenship and therefore a responsibility of every government. If a first-world community like Eugene cannot honor this basic right for a very small minority of its citizens irrespective of fault or circumstance, then we must question the moral ground on which we stand. This standard requires nothing fancy, just adequate housing. I want to suggest a minimum-cost model meeting a minimum standard. How about one or more campgrounds on vacant public land equipped much like those in national or state parks or KLA campgrounds, providing simple shelters such as the Conestoga Huts? Each campground should include a simply constructed main building with toilets, showers, wash basins with mirrors for shaving and self-putification, a laundry, a common room, a communal kitchen, and electric power provided to each Conestoga. Is that too much to expect of a community congratulating itself as a city of peace and a city of human rights? It's time for Eugene to put its money where its P R mouth is.
Thank you.
Such a model would become a source of community self-esteem.
Thank you. Your two minutes are up. I appreciate it. Thank you. Mary Broadhurst, followed by David Strahan. Or Strahan.
Good evening. My name is Mary Broadhurst. I live in Springfield. I want to begin by recognizing all the good work that council, staff, and the community has been doing regarding the issues that are facing the unhoused in our community. I hear your concerns that we, activists, will never, that we as a community, staff and council, will never be able to provide shelter for all, that it's a huge issue. And I hear your concerns that we, referring to us activists, will never be satisfied no matter what, will be back asking for more. The problem is huge. I drive down the street and I see so many unhoused people, even without their belongings on their back. I recognize many from my volunteer work at Egan Warming Centers. I wonder where they'll sleep and how they'll sleep. I lie in my bed on the cold nights and I think about them. I now know some of the people who have died on the streets of Eugene. At times, I am emotionally overwhelmed by it all, a little bit right now, and I want my old life back, where I didn't have to think about that problem. I didn't have to notice it. I understand how easy it is to say, when we are feeling emotionally overwhelmed by the issue, that we've done enough and there's nothing more we can do and you're asking for too much. I understand how hard it is to stay present in the moment when the enormity of the issue is staring us in the face and we feel with our hearts for folks who are dying in the streets. Some may recall the starfish story of the young boy on the beach, miles of miles of starfish dying on the beach, picking them up one by one and tossing them back in, and the elderly man coming along and saying, "Why do you bother? You'll never be able to save them all." We can save Whoville.
Thank you. David Strahan, followed by Marion Lang.
Hi, I'm David Strahan, resident of Lane County, but outside the city of Eugene. And I guess I'm an activist too because I feel it in my heart to get up here and speak about what the injustices that I've seen the city do and also the comments we've seen by the people. I'm here to speak out in support of the shelter, as are the people behind me and the people who can't make it here. I speak from the experience of both being welcomed at the site, volunteering at the Egan Centers, and various meals around throughout our county. I speak of years of volunteering, of meeting some of these very same people as I do river cleanups, seeing their homes and seeing what they have. These people aren't asking for anything. They're asking for a place that was long abandoned by the city of Eugene, a place that they've turned into a place of shelter and for many, a home. They're not asking for money. They're not asking for you to drive by and throw bills at them. They're not asking them to give you luxury condos. They're asking them to let you legally let them sleep. Thank you.
Thank you. Marion Lang, followed by Lisa Warnes. Marion? No. Marion? No. Okay. Lisa Warnes, followed by Andrew Heben.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Lisa Warnes. I reside in Ward 2. I'm here tonight to speak to the Keystone Amazon Headwaters, otherwise known as the Beverly property. Recently, the Beverlys have dropped their asking price down quite significantly, down to about $2.25 million, which is somewhere in the realm of tangible reality. And we have been working tirelessly to preserve that area, several areas in the, from the eastern flank of the Ridgeline to the western flank of the Ridgeline, making for a very nice contiguous forested greenway and wildlife habitat. And we are encouraging very strongly, council, to take a look at the acquisition of the Beverly, AKA Keystone Headwaters, as this is probably the closest we're ever going to get. And like I said, we've been working at this for 15 years. We're not going to stop working at it either. We're a very tenacious group of people and we're not going to give up. And you know that. You've seen me here for many years speaking to you. And I just think that it would be a wonderful vision to have, you know, from Mount Baldi to Spencer's Butte, this Ridgeline area that we can hike through. And it's a regional facility. It would be not just for a neighborhood park. And I believe that there is not quite enough in the Parks Bond for acquisition only of open space. It would not conflict with Civic Stadium acquisition because I don't believe you can use that money from the Parks Bond. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrew Heben, or Heben, followed by Emily Semple.
Andrew Heben, I'm in Councilor's Lincoln's Ward and on the Board of O V. I get that the tent is not seen as an acceptable form of shelter. I'm not an advocate for the tent, but we can't dismiss it in the absence of other alternatives. Whoville is providing a service that the city hasn't. Whoville is providing shelter first. If we cannot collectively accept this informal solution, then I urge council to vote to allow Whoville to remain open until a more formal alternative can be implemented. Recently, there has been a lot of talk around Utah's Housing First model. We've been told that this is a long-term solution, but at the same time, we're told we don't have a state tax base or an existing housing stock to support it and that it's a solution beyond the control of the city. In the meantime, there are things we can do now locally. How about a tiny Housing First model, providing housing that is affordable and sustainable without government subsidy? A reason we're in this predicament is because our standard of living and the standard of building has been grossly inflated beyond the human scale. The average American now consumes 1,000 square feet of space, whereas at Opportunity Village, the average resident requires 78 square feet of space. The median home sale price in Eugene last year was $200,000, whereas Opportunity Village will cost under half that to build in its entirety. Building small is certainly affordable, but permits and codes that uphold the status quo make it a challenge. I was delighted to read Mayor Piercy's urge for the city to look to more flexibility in this regard. We need to get microhousing in the building code and a zoning framework for microhousing developments that can share facilities in order to keep costs low. Let's pursue long-term solutions that are within our grasp. Small housing is the future, and by formally accepting that, Eugene can put forth an exemplary housing model that is economically and environmentally sustainable, a real win-win solution. Thanks.
Thank you. Emily Semple, followed by Tyson Stubber.
Emily Semple, George Brown's Ward. Honorable counsel, thank you for your continuing hard work to solve the challenge of our houseless. I want you to be brave. I want you to say yes. My name is Emily Semple, also known as Brave Beatrice. For now, I live downtown in a house I own with the credit union. Life has been kicking me sideways and I'm hanging on by my hangnails in financial terror with impoverishment knocking at the door. At least I have a door. I could be homeless. I pay property taxes. I pay your salaries. I pay for unneeded fences I don't want. I want you to be brave. I want you to say yes. But it's almost Groundhog's Day and here we are, building fences to keep people out, people with nowhere to go, again. It's been more than two years since we began this current battle for legal sleep, an inalienable right and necessary for life. In two years, a baby's first breath grows into a loud, brave, determined "No." So at two, we say "No." No to closing Broadway Hilliard, a functioning village, before other appropriate transitional rest stops are open. No to the inhumane camping ban. No to the continued refusal to respect existence, to allow life. But you, city manager, elected council, and mayor, you can be amazing. You can shine. You can show the world how to care. You can say yes. You can say yes to human dignity. You can say yes to human rights.
Thank you. Tyson Stubber, followed by Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton. Tyson? Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton, followed by Jana Thrift.
I'm Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton and I live in Betty Taylor's Ward. I want to thank council for what steps you've taken so far in providing property for people in order to try some of these pilots. I realize we keep coming to you with different types of pilots because the population we're trying to help is complex. It requires different types of models. The model at Whoville is helping some folks who, some of them, don't need anything but a place to sleep legally, others who need a lot of help. So that model there is working. One of the reasons why is because of the visibility. So the public can see them, they are more safe, and also they can find them to help give donations to that group of people. So when you're considering another site for this population, please consider someplace visible. And please do not close that site until you have a place that is immediately accessible. The notion of dispersing everyone is, that would be quite a terrible idea. So I hope that you dismiss that idea. I know initially that was what I had been told was the plan. Please do not pursue that plan. Make sure that there is an immediately accessible spot for the people who are located at Whoville to be relocated. Another issue is not just resources. I would like to bring to your attention another issue that stymies the efforts to find shelter for people who are unsheltered, and that is stigma. It's real. Whoville does something when it brings up the topic of people's fear about homeless and who they are, about people who are alcoholic, about people who are drug addicted.
Thank you very much. Jana Thrift, followed by Steve Hayes.
Dear Mayor, City Councilors, and City Manager, the Eugene Human Rights Commission is very concerned with the health and safety of the 40 to 50 residents of the Whoville at Broadway and Hilliard. We understand that EPD plans to close the protest camp down and disperse its residents. Among Whoville's residents are people who are disabled, some in wheelchairs, as well as people who suffer from severe mental health issues and substance abuse problems. Such people are often not readily accommodated by shelter services, even when beds are available. It's not clear where the residents will go if the camp is shut down. The HRC unanimously recommends that the following immediate action be taken. Rescind current plans to close Whoville and allow those who presently reside there to remain. This could be done in a number of ways, including a mayoral declaration of a housing emergency that would allow people to stay at Whoville legally. We believe the Whoville residents should be permitted to remain until adequate and accessible alternatives are available. We also recommend that the city expand the number of operating rest stops to at least four. One is already open, however, the specific reasons cited at our HRC meeting by the unhoused and their advocates regarding the city-approved Northwest Expressway site make it unviable as a second site. We believe three additional rest stop sites should be established, including the site at Eighth and Mill favored by advocates for the homeless before closure of the Whoville location is considered. Inclusion of such advocates in the selection of additional sites may expedite the selection process. From a human rights perspective, a perspective mandated by Eugene's revised Human Rights Ordinance and to which the HRC is highly committed, the recommended actions fall short of fulfilling the human right to housing. However, these actions are important steps towards recognizing the basic human right of every person to life, health, and personal security. Sincerely yours, Andrew Topson, Chair; Chris Noons, Vice Chair, Eugene Human Rights Commission. I assume the Human Rights Committee Commission was appointed by this council so that they could advise you about human right issues. I ask you to implement their recommendations.
Thank you. Steve Hayes, followed by Ian McTeague. Steve? Ian McTeague, followed by Al Johnson.
Hello? Testing. Okay, cool. My name's Ian McTeague. I live at the corner of 10th and Washington. I've been living in this wonderful city for about five years now and have gotten the chance to meet many, many interesting and fascinating, hard-working people, both with housing and without adequate housing. I've also seen the unfortunate darker side of the city, which has been the continued neglect of the needs of a huge amount of our population here, people I consider my fellow citizens and community members, and people who have proven, you know, proven that they are willing to work with the other members of the community to solve their own problems if given the chance to. Whoville is an example of that, an example that people, even people who are severely disabled, will participate in their own solutions if given the opportunity to. And I think the continuous pushback against this, in the name of, well, I understand there are very important priorities, the proper use of public property as well as private property, and I understand the city's need to, you know, keep a firm fist on these sorts of things because it's part of what keeps a staple democratic community running. However, a higher priority should be the needs of our fellow citizens who are not getting adequate health care, housing, or even a place to use the bathroom any times. And this has become an increasingly drastic problem as economic times have gotten harder in this town. And I would encourage the city to take this into account before dispersing a camp of people with nowhere else to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Johnson, followed by Bell Birch.
My name is Al Johnson. I'm a resident of Ward 2 and I've worked as a professional hydrologist for over 20 years with an emphasis on watershed protection and restoration. And I'm here tonight to urge the city to acquire the Amazon Keystone property, also known as the Beverly property. I believe that protection of the headwater areas is critical to maintaining the integrity of the, of the, of Amazon Creek for its entire length. I believe that by maintaining that property in an undeveloped state, it will ensure protection of water quality and also a key component of aquatic and riparian connectivity through the area and on up into Spencer's Butte. So please consider...
protection and restoration. And I'm here tonight to urge the city to acquire the Amazon Keystone property, also known as the Beverly property. I believe that protection of the headwater areas is critical to maintaining the integrity of the Amazon Creek for its entire length. I believe that by maintaining that property in an undeveloped state, it will ensure protection of water quality and also a key component of aquatic and riparian connectivity through the area and on up into Spencer's Butte. So please consider taking advantage of the current opportunity to acquire this very important property. Thank you.
Thank you. Belle Burch, followed by Ambrose Holtham-Theeley.
Hi, my name is Belle Burch. I'm Eugenean. There is a powerful and self-perpetuating stigma of fear around houseless people in general that causes those of us who dwell comfortably within four walls to judge, avoid, and in the worst cases violently mistreat them, regardless of whether or not we've had any personal interaction with them at all. Fearing and hating a demographic of people because they happen to live outside is just as bad as fearing and hating a group of people who happen to be Jewish, have dark skin, or experience sexual attraction toward others of the same gender. To do so is blatantly classist, inhumane, and abhorrent. I refuse to let myself fear or judge another human being without due cause, and skin color, religious affiliation, and sexual orientation are no more valid reasons to do so than a person's living situation, whether it be chosen or otherwise. The existence of Whoville is a testament to the fact that the social services currently available to houseless people in Eugene are not enough. I have been a part of the Whovillians' efforts to work together and learn how to support one another to create a gradually more and more sustainable and interconnected community, despite their own fears and doubts and despite the so far vested interest of the city to tear us and everything we collectively stand for apart in the name of keeping Eugene candy-coated for consumers to play in. To say I am inspired by these people I have come to think of as my family is a massive understatement. What we're asking for is not a handout. What we're asking for is an opportunity to help the city save what limited resources it has so they can be directed toward other projects. What we're asking for is for each one of you to trust us to be able to take care of ourselves and each other in a sustainable, organized way, enough to allow us a small piece of land that is not being used for any other purpose and give us a chance to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ambrose Holtham-Theeley, I hope I pronounced that right, followed by Marina Hachek.
Good evening. My name is Ambrose. I'm a Whovillian and currently I believe I reside in Zelenka's Ward. Love you. You're beautiful people. Tonight, I would like to talk to you about empathy. Biologically, we are prone to find a group to empathize with, and indeed, in 2012, the National Institutes of Health stated that current psychological evaluations of Maslow's hierarchy of needs must include empathetically, empathetical promotion of biosocial structure, meaning every citizen and human being has a physiological need to share a space to bond with other human beings that also meet their basic needs. This is classically known as a tribe. In our current society, certain social stigmas and traumas seem to unintentionally ostracize those labeled with antisocial behavior, specifically those disenfranchised by what could be considered a sociopathic economy. What we have seen is a current trend for groups gathered in movements such as Whoville and Sleeps to provide this need on their own. There is no reason to believe that these groups will stop gathering, and it would seem the only logical move at hand is to sanction an area for growing communities to thrive instead of fighting against a natural evolution of humanity. Thank you.
Thank you. Marina Hachek, followed by John Monroe. I had to read it for a minute.
Good evening, dear council members. I am here to talk on behalf of Roadhouse Music Studios located on 2650 South Willamette Street and my own business, Marina's Art Studio, located at the same address. I am here to please, to ask you, please consider option three, that will allow the bicycle lanes and two-lane road, one lane in each direction and one turning lane, the third one. So many of our music students and art students, their mode of transportation is bicycle, and we are always thinking about the possibilities to provide for them a better way of access to our studios. So I am here in support of the option three, and I also would like to share with you this, I came across this study done by the Heart Association of Australia. I know it seems awkward, but it's based, six of their study cases is based on streets that were successfully changed to a friendly bicycle and pedestrian streets and are based are United States cities, in United States cities. So I want to share this with you, and I left a copy with Beth, who is going to give a copy to you, to the councilors, that I have not had a chance to give one. So, thank you.
Thank you. John Monroe, followed by Joella Ewing. Or E-Wing, huh?
Hi, my name is John Monroe, and I live in the downtown. This isn't an easy topic, is it? I mean, we've been bouncing around it for a while, and from what I understand is it's decades old at this point, long before many of us have been dealing with it or here. It's big, you know? I was told a statistic this morning, which doesn't actually add much to the mood. Unfortunately, the Federal Bureau of Labor announced that roughly 45% of men and women between the ages of 18 and 24 are unemployed right now. That's in the country, and as we know, that Oregon, due to its long singular industry, has much higher unemployment. So we're in a massive economic issue, and it's not like, as much as I'm sure myself and my friends would like for y'all to be able to fix it, even if there was a complete unanimous agreement on exactly what to do, it's not like we can all come together and fix the global economy from here in Eugene. It's a very complex thing. But I think we have to start out from the assumption that what's going on with the homeless in Eugene is an emergency, if not a disaster, on a scale of which most of the policy issues that we have to deal with as a community are based on. And we have to put it at a different level of priority, and we have to assume that it's much more complex, and that the traumas that are resulting from this emergency are very, very difficult to deal with. We have a community right now that is demonstrating success, is being measured by law enforcement, social services, nonprofits, and community members. It's a prototype that is being paid attention to around the country and is being an inspiration. And we have a choice right now whether or not we're going to be the first to open and allow, or one of the last places to resist what's coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Joella Ewing, followed by Heather Seelak.
Hello, my name is Joella Ewing. I live in Mr. Brown's district. First of all, I want to thank you for all you've done so far in trying to help with the homeless problem. I have nothing new to add to this discussion. You've heard eloquent presentations of well-researched information and well-reasoned persuasions. Instead, I have some questions and concerns concerning the possible move of Whoville. Who takes the responsibility for ordering an imminent move in the dead of winter? Who ordered the fence? Who has made the decision to use 24/7 light and noise? Are you trying to incite a riot or any other kind of misbehavior to make it appropriate, then, to close down Whoville? Who contacted Egan Warming Center's St. Vinnie staff for help with the move? Where will we, Egan volunteers, move people to? Out into the street? I hope not. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Seelak, followed by Joseph Newton.
Hello, my name is Heather Seelak, and I reside in Ward Two. When I first moved to South Eugene, I heard everyone talking about saving the Amazon Headwaters, and I wondered, is this the only issue in South Eugene? And what I've come to find is it's not the only issue in South Eugene, and in fact, it's not a South Eugene issue. Protecting this vital natural area is important for all of Eugene. The property features three Amazon Creek headwater streams, as well as undeveloped forestland, wetland, and riparian areas. Clearing trees, changing wildlife and vegetation habits, and altering the watershed in these last untouched headwaters in the UGB conflicts with our shared values as a community. To reduce our carbon footprint, we must maintain and increase Eugene's carbon sinks, not destroy them. There are other advantages to preserving the land. The easy bus-accessible entry to the headwaters areas provide a non-peril environment and educational resource for students in our community. It is a key connecting point in the Ridgeline Trail. The headwaters provide organic matter that contribute to growth and productivity of higher organisms, that keep sediment and pollutants out of the stream's lower reaches, and enhance biodiversity. The time has come now for this to become a public land. I ask that you invest this opportunity to protect this area for the benefit of our children and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Newton, followed by Elaine Zablocki.
Joseph Newton, Ward Seven, Whittaker. And by the way, yes to the Amazon Headwaters too, but that's not my subject. Thank you for what you have done to address homelessness here. I appreciate that. Let's take a reality check, though. You know the limitations of your resources, of all of our resources. I think, Kitty, our mayor, is right that we have a big problem on the national level of priorities. The reality is, though, we do not have the resources to do it right. We don't have the resources to meet codes. We don't have the resources to house people in ways that make us feel comfortable. Look at what you could come up with, and then look, you know, divide what money you have by 1,300. You can't do it. There's some real limitations that we all face in this, and the reality, you know, I'm gonna point out the Hippocratic oath, the core of that. You can't always help, but above all, do no harm. Whoville is a self-supporting, self-organizing group of the most vulnerable people who've come together to provide support for each other, to keep each other stable, and it does help keep those with mental illnesses stable, to have nonjudgmental peers around them. Above all, folks, do no harm. Do not close Whoville. We need more Whovilles, not less. 60 legal spaces, 1,300.
Thank you. Thank you. Elaine Zablocki, followed by Paul Simon.
Testing.
You can bend that down.
I'm Elaine Zablocki. I live in South Eugene. Last June, I had a chance to walk over the Amazon Headwaters property with some people who are experienced at going out in the woods, and I'm not so experienced at that. So I saw this beautiful land, streams running through it, a trail running through it, a trail that connects to the other trails in South Eugene, and the atmosphere was very discouraged because the land, 27 acres, owned by the Beverly's, they're picturing putting lots of houses on it, they have a price in mind, and the price was above fair market value. You know, there was no way, even if people wanted to donate, they weren't going to donate for twice what the land was worth. So it was a very discouraged, sad walk. Last night, I got an email saying that the Beverly's have become somewhat more realistic in terms of how many houses you could put on that land and what the fair market value is, and it's available at a price that funds could be raised for it. So I believe that part of those funds would need to come from the city. Part of those funds would need to come, I'm told, that the 2006 park bonds measure included, envisioned this property. So please think about, this is, it's not hidden in the far woods. It's a place where someone like me can still get to. It connects to bus routes. It connects to the streets. The Army Corps of Engineers has said that this is a high priority, a very high priority, for preserving our watershed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Simon, followed by Emily Fox.
My name is Paul Simon, and I live in the Amazon neighborhood. And much of the sentiments I was hoping to share this evening have already been voiced by my fellow community members, and so what I would like to share is, well, I've spent an evening in Whoville, and I was both delighted and dismayed by what I saw when I went down there. I was delighted to see community members taking care of one another and supporting each other and listening to each other and having a space to share their concerns. I was dismayed because I was reminded of what an immense problem this is and how there are no easy solutions. And I can't in good conscience say that I support Whoville because I know that we can do a lot better. I know as a community, we have the resources at our, we have the capacity to do a lot better. The question is, do we have the will? And so, moving forward, I would like to encourage you to keep the camp open until there is a better alternative in place and not further the trauma that many of the occupants at Whoville have experienced in putting healing further away for those individuals. So, thank you, council members.
Thank you. Emily Fox, followed by Majiska C. Screen.
I'm Emily Fox. I live on 31st Street, East 31st Street. I encourage you, the council, to buy the Beverly property. It's far more valuable as a natural resource than as 47 houses and roads. It has the highest quality of unprotected natural resources in Eugene, the highest wildlife assessment ranking in the city, 60 to 68 points. The city has spent thousands of dollars in grants to restore the Amazon Channel below Martin Street. Now the city needs to buy this Beverly property to protect the riparian area. It's not just a South Eugene issue. These waterways, as you know, end up as Corvallis drinking water. And water quality and open spaces, habitat, is for everyone and not even just those people living at this time. In 1938, a man named Wilkins, who was an ex-mayor of Eugene, had a vision. He was 90 years old when he encouraged the city to buy Spencer's Butte. At that time, it was threatened. Somebody wanted to log it so their goats could roam around. Can you imagine Eugene without Spencer's Butte? Can you imagine without this vision? This man said, "I want that in 50 to 100 years, boys and girls will be able to appreciate this beauty." Well, I believe the boys and girls are sitting in this room. We are all the recipients of this man's vision, of the people's vision, back in 1938. And again, in 1950, Spencer's Butte was threatened with having a TV tower on top, and again, people rallied. Now is the time you can really do something to make a difference, not just for South Eugene, not just for the people of Eugene, not just for Oregon, but for people who are not even born. Thank you.
Thank you. Majiska C. Screen. Majiska C. Screen, followed by Garen Wales.
Majiska C. Screen, Ward Seven. Speaking, first of all, as a private citizen, I'd like to add my voice to those urging you to acquire the Amazon Headwaters. It's such a beautiful property. I want to offer to take several people from Whoville up there for a hike sometime. It's really, really good for the soul. Second and third, two quick points, speaking for the new nonprofit, A Community Together, or ACT. First of all, about Whoville. Please decide on Wednesday to direct the city manager and staff to apply the Triple Bottom Line tool to this question, and to report the results back to the council before there's any shutdown. The Triple Bottom Line is about people, profits, and the planet. You all know about that tool. I think this would be an excellent and very important time to apply that tool. Third, about the so-called Camping Resource Network that was last discussed here at your work session on September 23rd. I want to urge the city to apply all of your best practices and principles to this as another piece of the puzzle to solve, or at least better address, the concerns for people who are homeless. Please use the Triple Bottom Line on this one, too, and look at the Opportunity Eugene Task Force recommendations, apply the Diversity and Equity Strategic Plan, and Eugene Counts, if they still exist, everything you learned from the Bob Chadwick processes. Please take this piece of the puzzle seriously. Because of its scalability potential, it really could do so much. ACT is working on something similar and looking forward to opportunities to discuss this with staff and Mr. Reeves again. This really could help with transitions for so many as another pilot or model in the...
Thank you.
Thank you. Garen Wales, followed by David Nelson. Nelken?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Garen Wales, River Road neighborhood. First of all, I just want to encourage the city to pursue the proposed plan with the Eighth and Mill property, because there is no other place for people to go who live at Whoville now if they are evicted. It's something that's very accepted in our culture, to pretend that if we don't see poor people, they think to think they somehow disappear. They don't. They live, they die, sometimes on our streets. The economic downturn and the trends in homelessness that we're experiencing right now are not things that are going to go away or get better if we don't think about them. They're going to get worse, and thus far, the city has only really proposed unrealistic solutions, such as what was claimed in the eviction notice when it was stated that there were places for people to go. The social services and the services provided by the city are insufficient right now. Anyone who has been to Whoville, who has worked for the homeless population in the city, will tell you that. And camps are not going to go away. As the situation gets worse, as this wave of economic distress continues, we are going to see more people forced in these situations. And if the city wants to learn how to aid these people, it's going to have to learn how to help with the people who are actually addressing the situation on the ground. So I would please, please, please encourage you to listen to all of the brave and beautiful people who have come up tonight, who have spent tireless, tireless hours working with the people that have been ignored by social services, the city, and the government, and please, please, please work with us instead of against us. Thank you.
Thank you. David Nelken, followed by Michael Gannon.
Good evening, city councilors, Mr. City Manager. My name is David Nelken, and I'm a property owner at 2472 Willamette Street. I come before you tonight to try to convince you that the four-lane restriping alternative is the best solution for South Willamette Street. As the decision on Civic Stadium progresses to finality, it is necessary to look at the future increased traffic on Willamette Street. Nothing is at Civic Stadium now, and the street is busy. With either a Fred Meyer, the Y plus added housing, or as a sports venue, traffic volume is sure to increase. Add to this volume the maturation of the South Hill neighborhood, and the Envision Eugene forecast of a thousand to three thousand more people in the immediate area of Willamette Street, and you get lots of traffic. It is up to you to make the four-lane restriping a reality, so that traffic can flow and business can prosper. Add to that the rapid-response corridor on Willamette Street that our first responders use every day, and the only safe and sound solution is four lanes for Willamette. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Gannon, followed by Tom Halferty.
Hi, I'm Michael Gannon. I'm starting my 51st year in Eugene, except for a few brief steps away, and so I've lived in nearly every ward. And I have heard a lot of really powerful testimony, and I want to go back to my story of Christmas Day for me in Eugene, because every time I reflect on it, I realize that I will remember it for quite a long time. I told you that I turned down the opportunity to help someone find heroin. I was unable to find any of the buildings and facilities open that the mayor said would be available to help people stay warm. I found myself crossing the tracks at Washington Street, and I told you a Good Samaritan with what I thought were his two young daughters came by. I realized that the two minutes, three minutes I had then, and the two minutes today are not enough to describe the drama, and thrill, and happiness I experienced by being the person who received their Christmas dinner, which had been in these two plates with the kids' notations on them. It was a real effort by a local person in Eugene to deal with the poor on the streets. And then, gosh, I'm back at the same place I was the last time. The drama, the power, the glory of the Eugene Police Department came upon me. And that's what people who are homeless need to consider. That's why Whoville is a rest spot for people who don't have another place.
Thank you. Thank you.
Last up is Tom Halferty.
Hello, thank you. I live in Ward Two. That is Ward. I'm here tonight to speak on three issues that we all kind of have dealt with back in the Great Depression, 1930s. First one, homelessness was a big issue back then. I had a, saw an article in the Oregon Historical Quarterly that was about how Eugene dealt with the Great Depression, and there were photographs in there, and there were walled tents, a row of like army tents, the double-walled ones going. And they were located by the river behind the Four J District Headquarters. And the city actually dealt with it. Schoolteachers and all were living there, and it appeared that they were provided for homeless people. Back in the 30s, your predecessor's dealt with that issue, and I have confidence that she will do the right thing this time around, as it is a big issue. The other things, in 1938, also the citizens voted to build Civic Stadium, and I want to thank you for at least putting in a bid to try to renew that structure, and I really appreciate your bid that way. Hopefully, we will, people will step forward to actually accomplish the vision. The third thing is, back in 1938, also someone else mentioned that on the ballot, a different one than Civic, was buying atop Spencer's Butte, and as it was being logged before, people voted to buy it. And today, basically, the doorway to the Butte is now for sale. Here's the Ridgeline Trail map, and I'd like to leave this with you. I circled the area with the Beverly property in question, and you can see that it's got one of these city trails going through it. It's the only place that doesn't have green, so...
Thank you. Thank you.
Here's some geology.
I will declare the public forum over, and take just a moment to... We called names in the order they were given. I'm sorry, you weren't here when we called your name. I appreciate it.
She mispronounced your name.
She what?
I heard you call it, you mispronounced it. I don't think you...
I mispronounced your name?
Yeah.
Okay, then, please, come up. You have two minutes.
Mariah Lern. Please do not take this personal or anything, but really, we have to stop meeting like this. I want to first say that I hope that Mayor Kitty Piercy will allow Whoville to stay open. But I want to use this time to suggest a new, larger vision, a different direction. I want us to think about something other than isolating and warehousing a challenging and unwanted population on the outskirts of town. Dr. Gabor Mate of Vancouver, B.C., has recognized, as we also must, that human beings come in a wide range of varieties, and that all do not fit readily into the economic slots of our society. Dr. Mate has concerned himself with those at the least adaptable end, and has developed a model system integrating housing with programs and services that address their range of needs. The majority of this population have suffered serious child abuse and neglect, and there but for fortune, it could have been any of us. I believe that some adaptation of this Vancouver, B.C. model, scaled down for Eugene, is what a community claiming to care for human rights and respect for diversity should be providing. Dr. Mate has written two important books to this end, In the Realm of Hungry Ghosts, Close Encounters with Addiction, and Scattered, How Attention Deficit Disorder Originates and What You Can Do About It. Thirty to thirty-five percent of those who have attention deficit disorder go on to alcohol and substance abuse in an effort to self-medicate. Dr. Mate has done many interviews, which can be seen online. I suggest we host Dr. Mate, who can address alternative life-affirming ways to house and care for our fragile, marginalized population, so we are not always scrambling for emergency Band-Aid fixes. I suggest first let him give a presentation on his work, and the second day, we could host a panel discussion, which could include you and those who work directly in harm-reduction fields. This would give him a chance to address the many questions and particular concerns we may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will close the public forum now. Thank you. And just take a moment to express my gratitude to everyone in the room for the thoughtful and deliberate nature of the forum this evening. We are dealing with some very, very challenging issues, and our only ability to work them through is for we, as a council, to believe that in your hearts, you are good people, and for you to believe that we, as a council, in our hearts are good people, and that good people working together can resolve a problem and reach a solution to an issue. That will be the basis for us to work together. So thank you. I'm proud to be a part of a city that can discuss its issues the way we do. Do councilors have any comments? Councilor Clark.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody coming out to testify this evening, and appreciate all the thoughts and all the information. Mr. Manager, I'm not exactly sure who can answer this. Mark might be able to. I don't know. Probably not. We probably need to have, get an answer at some point in the future here, in the near future, if we're going to talk about it. On Wednesday, for seven years now, as I've served on the council, I have heard people come and talk about the ecological and environmental importance of the Beverly's property, or as it's often called, the Amazon Headwaters. Now, I think it's called that because people want others to understand that that's where Amazon Creek originates. That makes it important. It sounds like it should be important to protect. So my question is, why isn't it a Gold Five protected resource? If it's important to protect, where are our standards on that?
Yeah, I think we will have to get back to you on that.
And if somebody can help me understand, why if, what the purpose of a protected resource and classifying something a protected resource? If that's not one, because we have several others that are, why not? And if it isn't, and there's some new kind of classification of a resource that ought to be protected, how many other ones are there within our community that aren't protected? Because we're about to go into Envision Eugene, and I don't want to do these fights one at a time for the next 20 years, where we say, "You can build here, because this is okay," until we get to the point where somebody wants to do it, and then say, "Oh, no, we got to save that. Let's do it upfront. Let's say, these places are okay to build and get more dense, and these are off limits." And let's agree to it out front, so we don't have this kind of continual process on and on. I want to understand, why aren't we protecting this if we should be? And if not, what other places fit into the same category? Thank you.
Counselor Saret.
Thank you. So I want to thank everyone who came down to speak, folks who spoke to the Amazon Headwaters, the fireworks question, Willamette Street, and the folks who came down to speak on the Whoville and homeless situation. You know, in addition to the comments we received tonight, we've received many eloquent emails, compelling emails regarding the situation at Whoville and the homeless crisis. Who knew we had such eloquence in our community? I do hope that we can add one more rest stop to our pilot project, one that can accommodate people who use wheelchairs in particular. And today, council also took steps towards extending the time that the rest stop ordinance would be in effect. And I think if the mayor was here, she would take a moment to point out the many positive actions the city has already taken, to try and address the needs with programs like the car camping program and the rest stops, and also to remind folks that the city does contribute over a million dollars in public funds to homeless prevention programs and other programs that help many, many people in need in our community. The sites themselves are a response to the fact that the need outstrips our resources, as some of you pointed out, to address this in a better way. The rest stops are an attempt to mitigate the problem. They are not a solution to the lack of temporary, excuse me, the lack of emergency or transitional shelters. So that is a project we need to work on together as a community. It's going to take some time. So I appreciate your patience. I really think, for all the shortcomings that folks have pointed out about the city's response to this, I think this city manager and this council have been generous and flexible, taking actions beyond what many city governments would have considered. So I want to thank you all for that, and hope we can do more together. And again, thank you all for coming out tonight.
Yes, Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who came, talked about some very important issues. I just want to, next to the last speaker, I think, talked about things that people were doing back in the 30s, which is a time when people were much worse off than we are now, and the fact that they apparently found a way to take care of homeless people. We know that they saved Spencer's Butte and the Ridgeline Trail, which for people far in the future to enjoy, and they also saved, built Civic Stadium, which is something, and I think it's something that is important to a lot of people now. And I think that we should be thinking of the future, the people who will live here many years after us, and especially protecting the environment. The Amazon Headwaters is a really crucial part of protecting the air, the water, reducing carbon footprint, providing a place that's accessible to everyone, and we'll be talking more about that later. And as for Whoville, I think it's amazing that people have done this for themselves, and it seems to be working. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, for coming out, especially the Whoville folks. And thank you for saying thank you. I think the city council and the staff have done quite a bit on homeless issues and created a lot of good things that have been happening, and we've been quite courageous in trying new things and trying some pilots. And I... And I think we're light-years ahead of certain cities and way ahead of a lot. I agree that it isn't quite fair that we say you can't camp there, but you, and without saying where you can camp, which is the whole point of the pilot programs on Opportunity Village and for the rest stops. About a week ago, I suggested that we need to have our second site open, and probably need another one, to be able to say to the folks that are at Whoville that they need a place to go. And we can't accommodate everybody, that's not the point of the pilots, but it is trying to experiment with this new type of response that is probably a Band-Aid, is not a permanent solution, but we're working on the permanent solutions, too. So bear with us and keep faith.
Thank you. With that, we will move to item number two, which is the consent calendar.
So I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
And Counselor Polling?
Yes, I previously submitted corrections on minutes.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended. All those in favor signify by raising their right hand.
What was the change? It was the wording on the motion.
The wording on the motion, it was sent out by his email.
Yeah.
Eight in favor? Any opposition? None? Consent calendar is adopted. Item number three, an action item, a resolution adopting amendments to Stormwater Systems Development Charge methodology and amending resolution number 4900. Mr. City Manager.
The council has asked to take action on a resolution adopting modifications to the Stormwater Systems Development Charge, or SDC, methodology. The modification, excuse me, implements changes related to stormwater development standards adopted by the city council on January 13th of this year. The proposed SDC methodology includes a new rate component required for certain development under the recently adopted standards. One person submitted written testimony prior to last Tuesday's public hearing, a copy of which is attached to the agenda item summary.
Thank you. Can we, as you leave the room, can you please take the discussions and conversation outside so we can finish our business for the evening? Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
They're all talking, they can't hear you.
Do we have any discussion of this before we make a motion? Seeing none, Counsel Vice President?
I move to adopt resolution 5100, adopting amendments to Stormwater System Development Charge methodology and amending resolution number 4900.
Second.
Either way, it's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising their right hand. I see seven in favor, all those in opposition, one, motion carries. Moving to item number four, code amendment of protected class definition of sexual orientation. Mr. City Manager.
This is an action item to adopt an ordinance amending the Eugene Code to include in the definition of sexual orientation protections related to one's gender identity. In 2007, the legislature modified the state's definition of sexual orientation to exclude explicit protections related to gender identity. Eugene Code is currently not consistent with the state's definition and does not include gender identity within its definition of sexual orientation. Amending the Eugene Code to be consistent with state definitions would not afford any additional legal protections related to gender identity, nor would impose additional requirements for city operations beyond those currently required by state law.
Thank you. Is there any discussion before we make a motion? Seeing none, Counsel Vice President?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5107, an ordinance amending Section 4.615 of the Eugene Code by revising the definition of sexual orientation to read "actual or perceived heterosexuality, homosexuality, bisexuality, or gender identity."
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising their right hand. I see seven...
Can I raise my left hand?
Eight.
Eight in favor, none opposed. The motion passes. That was the last item on the agenda for this evening, so I declare the meeting closed.